Town Council's office and I am the land use attorney for the town. And one of the things that I specialize in at my firm is 40Bs. We have been seeing quite a bit of 40Bs lately. I'm not really sure why, I'm not sure if it's the economy or what it is, but we're seeing an influx of them all over the Commonwealth. So, I'm just going to quickly go over the procedures and the framework for 40B and then I can take any questions that you guys have and any concerns we can try and get a better handle on. So, as you know, 40Bs are, they're, the jurisdiction of 40Bs is National General Laws, Chapter 40B, and it's Sections 20 through 23. And what it does, in a nutshell, is it allows a developer to override local permits, regulations, and approvals. They are not allowed to override state permits or state approvals. So, for example, they can seek a waiver from all zoning bylaws, setbacks, they can seek a waiver from Board of Health regulations. And the reason, the reason for this is because local regulations due to home rule petition, local regulations are usually more stringent. So, for example, for conservation commissions, the Wetland Protection Act protects resource areas, whereas most local bylaws protect the resource area plus 100-foot buffer zone. So, a developer could get a permit in a buffer zone, whereas normally, under a normal, you know, a conventional subdivision would have difficulty doing that. So, some of the ways to protect the town from unfriendly 40Bs is to, you know, update the ZBA regulations for a separate section with comprehensive permit regulations. A 40B would only be subject to these regulations if the regulations are in place prior to an application being filed. And those regulations will provide for consultant fees, a filing fee. Now, a filing fee has to be comparable to fees for similar land use applications. However, usually with a 40B, you, there's a lot more man work involved. There's usually many, many plan changes, so you have staff constantly reviewing plan changes, you have staff coordinating, getting plans to members, things like that. So, I will say that most of the comprehensive, comprehensive permit filing fees are higher than most. I was at a 40B hearing last night and the fee was $1,200 for the application, $200 for each unit. So, and no one has, no one has challenged that, so I guess maybe it's okay. So, before, you know, before an application is filed, you know, there's certain things that the town can do. You want to have comprehensive planning, you want to have a master plan, you want to be working towards a master plan, you want to be working towards an open space plan. What these things do is a master plan, an open space plan will, can set up what the local needs actually are. Because, as you all know, to deny a 40B project, you have to prove that the local need outweighs the need for housing. So, some ways to do that is comprehensive planning. Again, it's not a, it's not a sure thing, but, you know, it helps. A town can also invoke safe harbor, and that means that you can deny a permit, a comprehensive permit. And if you are at safe harbor and you deny the permit, you have, the town has the presumption that the local need outweighs the affordable housing because the affordable housing goal has been met. And there's a couple of ways to do this, and the most common is 10% of your housing stock on the subsidized housing inventory. And, as you know, this, this town is extremely close to the 10%. So, once it gets over the 10%, we would be in safe harbor. However, it is important to note that in 20, in 2020, the, all the numbers are going to change with the new census. So, most towns that are actually in safe harbor now will not be in safe harbor when the new census comes out. But, still keep working towards it. There's another one which is GLAM, which is the 1.5% of land, land area, which is if the town can show that 1.5% of the town's land area is occupied by affordable housing. Now, this is a, a very complicated procedure, and the track record at DHCD is that it's pretty unsuccessful, but we, we do have some towns that are in the process of trying that. And what it is, is that you have to, there's a numerator and a denominator, and you have to show that all of the land, you have to provide all the land area in town, and then you can take out certain things, you can take out, you know, water, you can take out streets, things like that. And then you come up with this area of land, and then you have to superimpose affordable housing on it. And then there's always a question as to what constitutes affordable housing? Is it just, if you have a 10-unit 40B, is it just the two units, or is it the whole 40B? And DHCD intends to change their mind on that quite a bit. We have one town that is appealing a decision from DHCD regarding their 1.5%. So, that is something we are definitely following because we're involved in it. And then you have, if, you have a housing production plan, there are safe harbors where affordable housing in a calendar year, if it exceeds .3%, .3 of 1% of land area, and then you also have if you, affordable units during a 12-month period exceed 2% of the housing stock. And again, these are just some ways to be able to say no to an application and not even, not have to even deal with it. You can also invoke safe harbor and then, but still hear the project, and you're basically reserving your right to deny the project. So, if you have a project that comes in that's marginal and you're in safe harbor, you know, I, I suggest that you invoke safe harbor and you reserve your right to deny it, and you work with the developer to revise the project, to either make it smaller and more affordable units, things like that. And that's a good way, it's a good negotiation tool. For safe harbors, there's a couple others that are very, that are very rarely used, which is the large-scale projects. Has to be, I think it's, I think it's 17% of the amount of units in the area or something. It's, it's a very large-scale project. And then a related application, if you have someone that comes in to the planning board for a conventional subdivision and they are denied and, for some reason, and then they come in with a 40B, they, they have to wait 12 months after their denial. So, that really just is, kind of buys you time. And then, again, with the, with planned production, you need an affordable housing production plan, and that plan has to be certified by DHCD. For the procedure to assert safe harbor is, along with anything with the comprehensive permits and the regulations, 760 CMR 56, timelines are tight. So, when an application comes in, you know, you have seven days to send it out to town boards, you have 30 days to, to initiate a public hearing, to open a public hearing. At that public hearing, you have 15 days from the opening of the public hearing to assert your safe harbor. You have to give written notice to the applicant, you have to send it certified amount to DHCD. Everything then freezes. The applicant can appeal the invocation of safe harbor to DHCD, they have, and they have to make a decision in 30 days. If they don't make a decision in 30 days, it is constructively construed on the part, on the, on the side of the town, meaning that the town is in safe harbor. However, that rarely happens. Prior to, prior to applying for a comprehensive permit, a, an applicant has to get a project eligibility letter, which is where they have three jurisdictional requirements. They have to be a public agency, a nonprofit, or a limited dividend organization. Obviously, we most like, we most commonly see the limited dividend organizations. And the project has to be fundable by subsidizing agency under the low or moderate income housing program. There's very few of those in Massachusetts, there's about, I think there's four. Most, most common is Mass Housing. And the applicant has to prove that they have site control. Most, most applicants are developers that have a purchase and sale agreement on the property. A purchase and sale agreement is considered site control. However, that purchase and sale agreement has to be a valid purchase and sale agreement, so we always check to make sure it's not expired. However, every time we bring up the fact that it's expired, they simply just go and get another extension from their seller. So, so far, it hasn't really come to anything. The, the project eligibility letter will have the actual application that the developer gave, it'll have, it's supposed to have, it's a notice to the Board of Selectmen as the chief executive officers of the town. Once that, that, so the application for the project eligibility letter comes into the Board of Selectmen, we then have 30 days to comment, there's a site visit with DHCD, and then a project eligibility letter is issued and it's not appealable. So, even if you think that a project just simply can't go forward for some reason, if a PEL is issued, it's issued, there's no appealing it. So, we recently got a, we recently got a PEL. The town, within the 30 days, the town made numerous comments regarding the fact that the water supply was not sufficient. A PEL was issued, the process began, an application was filed with ZBA, the process began, the process is now on hold because there's no water. So, if DHCD had listened to us, it would have maybe saved some time, but, but we'll see. So, with regard to an application that comes in, an application is filed with the zoning Board of Appeals. Their, local regulations can, can supplement what are the required contents of the application. However, 760 CMR 56.05 has, has general requirements for an application. It's important to note that a, a 40B project that is before the zoning Board of Appeals only requires preliminary plans. Once it is approved, DHCD and the, the funding agency, meaning Mass Housing, they actually are the ones that approve the final plans. So, they have to be preliminary plans, but they have to be detailed enough to know, to show us what's going on. And then, with, with an application, there is a filing fee, and an applicant cannot, can only contest the filing fee once it is paid. So, in the Hanover case, the applicant, the filing fee came to something like $12,000, and the applicant said, "No, I'm not paying that, I'm going to pay you $6,000 in here, because I think that's reasonable." And so, the town did not hear the application, they claimed constructive approval, the Housing Appeals Committee claimed, granted constructive approval, the town further appealed that, and the end result came out on the side of the town, where the court said that the filing fee, if it's going to be contested, it has to be paid first. You can't have applicants determining what they think is reasonable. So, a filing fee has to be submitted. When you have a public hearing at the ZBA, it's the same as a 40A, Section 11, you have to notify abutters, you have to do public, you know, publication in the newspaper. The, you know, again, we have this timeline where within seven days, that application has to be sent out to all local boards. Local boards, it's a, it's a, it's a defined term in the regulations, and it includes everyone. Water departments, highway departments, affordable housing, elderly housing, trusts, it's just, I, I recommend sending it to everybody you can think of, every board you can think of. You then have to open the hearing within 30 days, and you have to close that hearing within 180 days. And if you miss, if you miss the 30 days or the 180 days, it's constructive approval. Obviously, the 30 days and the 8, 180 days can be extended in writing by the applicant, and that extension has to be filed with the town clerk. And it has to be, obviously, be signed by the applicant and/or the applicant's representative. And then, once the 180 days is up, or the extension of that, you have 40 days to, for the close of the hearing, from the close of the hearing, you have 40 days to file your decision with the town clerk. You forward, a copy is forwarded to DHCD, and again, you can mutually extend time when it's, if needed. For the, for the public hearing, what, what I like to recommend to my zoning boards is that the first hearing, you do an overview of the project, and then you write away consult, you write away, engage consultants, peer reviewers that are, they are reviewers that work for the town, but the applicant pays for them. And so, if you have a large, large project where you have stormwater issues, you have wetland issues, you have traffic issues, and even, it's somewhat rare, but even architectural issues. I had 140B that was, it was proposed to, it started out as five stories. It, it was reduced down to three stories, but the town was saying to the applicant that five stories is too high, the applicant was saying, "I need this to make my project economical." So, they ended up getting a peer review, an architectural peer review. And that was, that was held to be fine. So, the most common peer reviewers are engineering for stormwater, for septic, and if there's any wetland concerns, or wetland, and then also traffic engineers. The, the whole purpose of the zoning here, the zoning Board of Appeals hearing is because the applicant wants waivers. So, the applicant is going to ask for waivers of local regulations. An applicant should come in with a waiver list, the waiver list should be detailed, it should be, it should state exactly what waivers are needed, and the board should decide on each waiver individually. And then, with the decision, the decision again, has to be reasonable and consistent with local needs. There's the balancing test, which is, does the need for affordable housing outweigh valid planning objections to the details of the proposal, such as health, open space, safety, and I have open space twice, sorry about that. And there's a strong presumption in favor of housing. The Housing Appeals Committee very, very rarely over, or upholds a denial. That is not a project that is in safe harbor. If, if the town is under 10% and denies it, it's very rarely upheld. So, the health and safety of the occupants of the town, you know, that is a local concern. Usually, that's the, the local concern that should be, should be focused on the most because those are some things that are, get you to make the project a little bit more palatable. So, here, there's no municipal water, and there's no municipal sewer. And so, the location of wells in relation to septic systems is very important. And, along with that, is the preservation of open space. So, you know, a lot of times, it's good to get a project where you almost are designing a cluster development, where you're allowing, you're allowing structures to be closer than, than normal, but you're also getting some open space. You have to, you have to, for the decision, you have to apply all the requirements and regulations equally to subsidized and unsubsidized housing. So, for example, if you have 12, 12 single-family houses, three of them are going to be subsidized, those three houses cannot be smaller than, than other three, 12, what would that be?
Nine.
Nine, thank you. I'm not very good at numbers. So, you know, all, the requirements are for the project as a whole, they're not for the individual aspects of the project. And it cannot be denied solely because it doesn't conform to local requirements, that's the whole purpose of the, of the statute. And then, you know, the local regulations, they have to relate specifically to the proposed project. So, for example, if, if you have a well that is too close to a septic system, the waiver that you deny is a Board of Health waiver, or separation to groundwater, something like that. The, so, that, by denying that waiver, you could essentially be denying the whole project, but that would be, you know, how you would do that. So, what you would have to have in that instance is you'd have to have an engineer, a peer reviewer, saying that there will be breakout in that septic system, and it will contaminate those wells. So, you have to have clear and convincing evidence. And one of the ways to, you know, design a project that is palatable is to request appropriate mitigation. And mitigation, as I'm sure you all know, can be, you know, in the form of, of anything, you know, you could, again, you could have a project, you know, concentrated in one area of the site to get open space in another area, to have a bigger buffer zone between a septic and a, and a well, or, you know, screening for abutters, having the project set, sit further off the street for traffic reasons, things like that. And, and for the most part, I think because of developers coming in with preliminary plans, for the most part, developers are willing to revise the project a couple times, I, I find. Sometimes you, you know, it all depends on who, who you're dealing with, but, but they, they seem to be more flexible than someone that comes, that comes in, spends a ton of money on final plans, and then has to change them. The conditions cannot, the conditions cannot invade the jurisdiction of the subsidizing agency. So, that means that the conditions, you can't do, you can't make conditions that would make the project uneconomical. And, you know, if you have infrastructure concerns, again, you want to have an engineer, you want to have backup from a, from a professional, from an engineer, someone that can say, you know, that this, the, the street, the, you know, the subdivision roadway needs a guardrail because of the grading, or something like that. And again, a decrease in units must be for valid planning health reasons. So, for example, a septic system that's too large, you'd have to decrease the units in order to, if the septic system cannot be redesigned, maybe then the units have to be decreased, the number of total units. For denials, outright denials are very rarely upheld. Again, there's the OIB Corporation case, which is where that was, the whole, the whole, the whole project was kind of a nightmare, but it, the reasons for, the reasons for the denial that, that were upheld was the length of the access road, the condition of the access road, meaning it was, there was, there was an extreme curve, there was the proximity to a railroad yard used to store propane gas, there was inadequate water pressure for firefighting, and it was essentially at the end of a runway. And that was upheld. For some other cases, the Dennis case was a huge apartment complex in the middle of Dennis Village, and the town denied it because of the massing and the density of it. And it's, that one's an interesting decision because there was a majority of the committee, the committee's three people, so two of the people on the committee agreed with the town that the massing was too much, the density was too much. And the third wrote a scathing dissent claiming that you don't need open space, or you don't need room, you need, affordable housing is more important than room. But, the majority recognized the fact that the massing isn't affecting just off-site properties or budding properties, it was actually going to affect the quality of life for people that were going to live in this, in this proposed development. So, that, the, it was upheld, the denial was upheld because of that. In Hingham, there was, the Hingham case was, there was a master plan that the location of the, the location of the project, of the proposed residential project was, you know, according to the master plan, it was in a commercial area where they were going to put, I think the master plan recommended putting an office building there. It also happened to be right next to the old Hingham Shipyard ammunition field, so I'm not really sure how safe that is, but anyway. But, they denied it by saying the local concern is that that's not where, that's not where residents, residents, you know, residential housing should be. We've already slated that for office buildings. And then, again, there was, you know, with contamination was a lesser reason, but that was also upheld. And then, the most recent denial is the Stowe case, where the town of Stowe, same as here, has no public water and no public sewer, so there was a massive septic system. I think it was, I think it was about, I think it was about 30 units, so it was a very large septic system, where there was an engineering report and there was professional testimony that the, the hydro geo report claimed that the, there would be breakout from the septic system and effluent would contaminate private wells. So, that was the most recent, the most recent denial that was upheld. So, an applicant, if, once the decision is rendered, an applicant can appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee within 20 days. The Housing Appeals Committee is a, it's a subgroup of DHCD. Other aggrieved parties, meaning abutters, or pretty much just abutters, would have standing direct abutters, they can appeal to either land court or Superior Court. They can also appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee, but I don't know many that have. So, once a decision is issued, modifications are quite common to, to decisions. A lot of the reason why is because, again, the zoning board isn't dealing with final plans, they're dealing with preliminary plans. So, a modification can be requested by the applicant, and once a modification comes in, the zoning board has 20 days to determine if it's substantial or insubstantial. If it's an insubstantial modification, it can just happen. If it's a substantial modification, within 30 days of the determination, there has to be a public hearing, and then you go the normal course of a, of 40B, where, once you make, once you close the, once you close the, the public hearing, you have 40 days to issue a decision. So, once, so, once the modification request comes in, the zoning board has 20 days. If the zoning board doesn't act in 20 days, it is automatically deemed insubstantial. So, if somebody comes in, so now, so the regulations also provide examples of what's a substantial modification and what's an insubstantial modification. And a substantial modification, one of the, one of the main reasons is change of units. So, if a unit, if the number of units increases by more than 10%, it's a substantial improvement. So, the 20 days is very, very important, because you can have a project go from 20 units to 40 units, and if the modification request comes in and it's not acted upon in 20 days, it's automatically approved. And so, the, the project automatically goes from 20 units to 40 units. So, modification requests are, are very important, that they are acted upon. And 20 days is really hard. 20 days is hard to get a seven-member board together and do a public hearing, you know, have it noticed and things like that. So, a lot of the modifications, a lot of times, you can request a extension to make that determination from the applicant, and again, that also has to be in writing. And so then, so that's where, that's where it all ends technically, with the town. So, the town, once the project is approved, the town is, pretty much, doesn't have much control over the project unless there's a modification. As the ZBA knows, it's my practice too, in our decisions, that the town require a separate regulatory agreement, we call it a springing regulatory agreement. So, if there's a regulatory, the regulatory agreement that DHCD and Mass Housing, that they require, if something goes wrong with that, if they, if it expires, or there's an issue with that, we still have our own regulatory agreement, that is between the town and the applicant or developer. And so then, there's also, there's also provisions for having, for getting units on the SHI. Once a, once a comprehensive permit is approved, there's three years to start construction. The permit is good for three years. The units do not stay on the SHI for three years. There's certain benchmarks that have to happen. So, from a permit being issued within 12 months, there has to be a building permit pulled. Once that building permit is pulled, there has to be a certificate of occupancy within 12 months. And if none of these things happen, units gets taken off of the SHI. So, it's, it's really, the town is in a really tough position because the town can't necessarily force a developer to go and get a building permit. So, it's definitely, it's definitely a, a provision of 40B that has to really be looked into, because towns are having units come off SHI simply because a building permit was taken out, but a certificate of occupancy wasn't taken out. Or, you know, the towns go through all this prob, all this, all this process to get affordable units permitted, but then a building permit isn't taken out. So, it's kind of just sitting there. It doesn't mean that it won't eventually go back on the SHI, because the project cannot be built without these affordable units. So, the other thing that, that I require in my decisions, and thus far, DHCD has also done the same thing in their regulatory agreements, which is that- done the same thing in their regulatory agreements, which is that a developer cannot build nine market rate units and then do the three affordables last. They have to do, you know, it has to be, there has to be, it has to be proportionate.
Can the decision be conditioned upon the meeting these, these milestones? The one-year milestone?
So, so I haven't, I haven't seen that yet, but what we do is we require that a building permit, if a building permit is taken out for a market rate unit, it has to be, one has to be taken out for a affordable unit. So, we kind of tie the affordable unit to a market rate unit, so therefore, there's incentive for them to actually do these things. So, the problem is, is that in one of them, we, we basically said that a building permit cannot be issued for a market rate unit without a building permit being issued first for a affordable unit. We also, we brought that over to the certificate of occupancy, and we said that a CO can't be issued for a market rate unless the CO is also issued for an affordable. And we kind of ran into a problem there, because certificates of occupancy are a state. It's a state approval. It's not a local approval. So, the building inspector, his hands are tied under the state building code to issue a CO. So, the only way, the only real way is the, is the issuance of a building permit. Then to get them, and then what we, what you could say is that a certain, a certain amount of affordables have to be completed, a cer, a certain amount of, of affordables have to be completed before building permits can be taken out for market rates. So, it's extremely complicated, but in essence, we're trying to get around exactly that.
So, do you think it's permitted to condition the, the permit on meeting those milestones?
I don't think that you could say to a, I don't think you could say to a developer that within, within twelve months of receiving a comprehensive permit, he has to take out building permits. Because the comprehensive permit by statute is good for three years. So, I, I, I don't, I don't think that that can be done, unfortunately. Any other questions?
You mentioned changing the, or amending the zoning bylaws to, to cover the comprehensive permit process.
So, it would only be the zoning, it would only be the ZBA rules and regulations, which can happen at a regular meeting.
Okay.
I have a sample I can send over. But, do you have any rules and regulations that you know of?
Not that we know of.
Okay.
Not written down?
So, we can, so what you would have is you would have ZBA rules and regulations, and then you would have comprehensive permit rules and regulations, which would be part of it. But they are, they are different. And so, yes, all you have to do is put it on your agenda as new business. So, unlike conservation rules and regulations that have to be public, that have to be publicized, the public meeting has to be noticed in the paper and things like that. For the zoning board, under 48, section 12, it does not specify that.
Can we get copy of those?
I will. Not right now, but I can.
Can you just walk through this modification piece? The written notice to the board by the applicant. Within twenty days, the, the applicant has to hear back whether or not the board considers it.
Substantial or insubstantial.
Right. But then, if it's considered substantial, do you have to hold the public hearing within thirty days of the initial petition?
No. No, within thirty days of the, of your determination.
Okay. And then, because they have to do full notices.
Yes.
We have the applicants do the notification of neighbors, they get a list. Is that okay?
Yep. It's the same as with any other, any zoning hearing that comes before you. It's the same.
And could we just walk through, so you issue a comprehensive permit, and now the applicant has three years to act on it. What does act on it mean? Does that mean they have three years before they have to pull the first building permit?
No, not necessarily. Substantial compliance with the permit is case law, there's case law out there that says that substantial compliance with the permit is at the discretion of the building commissioner. And many, many cases have held that earth, earth preparing, preparing the site, site work is substantial compliance. So, if somebody starts to excavate, puts, gets foundation permits, installs septic system.
So, for example, if two years go by and no permit has been pulled, no building permit, would that be reason to question whether or not they're in substantial compliance?
And if nothing has been done to the property, then yes.
Well, what if they just go in and level it?
Then substantial compliance. Leveling it is not, I wouldn't go with leveling it. So, the cases that, the factual cases that have determined substantial compliance without any building or even pulling building permits have been foundation permits, a septic permit has been issued and septic was being installed. The other one that's an unusual case is that it was a 21E site, there was, there was contamination on the property, or suspected contamination. So, they went in and they cleaned it up and they put in monitoring wells. And then there's, oh, there was another one where they had to, there was substantial, substantial material coming out of the site and grading, and so that, all that substantial. But that was, that was huge. There was a huge amount of earth coming out of there. I'm not sure that just start, you know, digging a hole will qualify.
So, if you go in two years and no building permit has been issued for any building in the project, what does the town do at that point?
There's not much, because they have three years. So, three years and a day, the town can say that the building permit is, is no longer valid, that the comprehensive permit is no longer valid.
And that's from the date of the comprehensive permit?
The date of the decision. Yep.
The date of the decision or the date of the issuance of the decision?
It's, it would be when the, when the decision becomes final, so it would be the date of the decision plus, plus twenty days when, when LOE certifies it.
So, it has, it has to be with LOE's, and it has to be with LOE's for twenty days?
Yeah.
And then that's the start date for the three years?
Just to, just to put things in perspective, last night, I was at a hearing for a modification of a comprehensive permit that was issued in 2002, and there's been no building permits pulled.
Okay.
So, they have been simply just putting in a septic system, putting in wells, getting foundation permits.
But they've been doing something?
Very slowly, I would say.
One other thing, how do you keep affordables affordable?
So, the re, the way you keep them affordable is, there's a regulatory agreement that's required by DHCD. So, after, after a comprehensive permit is issued, the applicant works with DHCD to enter into a regulatory agreement. That regulatory agreement is recorded. There's also a monitoring agent that's required under the, under the regulatory agreement, there's a monitoring agent that's required. My decisions also require a monitoring agent. But that monitoring agent is the person that will conduct the lotteries, check the qualifications of applicants to see if they're, they fit under the affordable or not. And then, and then what, like I said, what, what I trend, I tend to do is I then, I require an affordable, a regulatory agreement with the applicant separately. And it's a springing affordable, it's a springing regulatory agreement. So, it kicks in if the regular, the DHCD regulatory agreement is found to be null and void.
So, if you have a moderate or low-income unit, and the original owner decides to leave, and they're going to sell the unit, and ninety days transpire and the bank says, you know, you better do something, and they can't find someone, I mean, how do you prevent that kind of thing from happening?
Well, unfortunately, that's, that's on DHCD, and it's on the monitoring agent. So, the monitoring agent should, should be providing DHCD with evidence that lotteries were held, that lotteries were advertised, and that even with, you know, all these lotteries that, that no one came forward.
And if they don't?
And if they don't, DHCD will release the regulatory agreement, as far as I know. Again, once, again, once an, once a comprehensive permit is permitted, it really, you're really relying then on DHCD to, to implement, but when it comes to affordability, to implement the comprehensive permit. The other thing that DHCD is supposed to do is they're supposed to monitor the developers' profits, because the profits are not supposed to exceed twenty percent. If the developers' profits exceed twenty percent, the town is supposed to get that extra money. And so, that's, DHCD is in charge of doing that. They're in charge of, they're in charge of, you know, drafting and enforcing the regulatory agreement. They're in charge of overseeing the monitoring agent with regard to lotteries, et cetera. And they are, they take care of the, they monitor the finances of the developer. Yes.
Is there anything that automatically keeps other charges, for example, HOA charges, from being the same for market value and affordable?
So, it would, it could be in the decision, if it's in the decision, and then it would have to be within the deeds. So, with HOA charges, it's really not an issue, because you would have it within the, within the HOA documents. With condo fees, it's different, because you have a master deed, you have, you have a condominium trust. And the master deed under the statute, under 183A, the condominium fees are based on the size and the percent of ownership, which is based, technically based on the size. So, there's numerous documents that have to be revised and changed. Can't just be standard according to 183A. It's going to have to be different.
So, we were in that circumstance at the present time with one of our units. Whose responsibility is it to make sure that these units remain affordable as far as the condo fees or the HOA fees?
In my opinion, it's DHCD's. Unless it's specifically in the decision, then the, if there's, if there's a specific provision in the actual comprehensive permit that says that the affordable units, as a condominium, the affordable units will have a reduced, reduced fees, then it can be enforced by the building inspector. So, the enforcement of a comprehensive permit is just like, it's under 48, section seven, just like any zoning violation. So, you know, that could be, but again, it would have to be, so, there would have had to be a requirement in, there would have had to be a requirement in the comprehensive permit. And then, the comprehensive permit needs to have a requirement that any condominium documents are approved by the town. So then, when the, when the condominium documents come to be approved by the town, you have to take the condominium documents, and you have to take the decision, and you have to make sure that they match. So, you would have to make sure that the, it states it in the master deed, in the condominium trust. And then, I would also, I would also expect that the regulatory agreement, that DHCD would have something in their regulatory agreement, because the only way that a, as far as I know, the only way that you can have reduced condominium fees not based on square footage is if DHCD approves it in the project eligibility letter or says that it's okay.
So, it would be a negative rather than a positive? In other words, it's assumed that there would be a relationship between the type of unit and the fees paid, unless to the contrary, there's something.
Right. Because the statute, yeah, the statute provides that it, it's based on, on the, on the ownership interest. And so, the ownership interest is based on usually the size of the unit.
Thank you.
What if there's a stipulation in the eligibility letter and the town fails to notate it in the comprehensive permit?
The, the, the project eligibility letter is really not necessarily part of the decision, because the project eligibility letter comes in, and the project throughout the hearings will evolve, can, can evolve into something completely different. And the project eligibility letter is really just that the developer shows that it, they can make the proj, they can do X, Y, Z, and the project can be economical up to twenty percent. Again, you can't really come in with a project and say, I'm going to put twenty-seven houses on one acre. There has, it has to be within reason, but the project eligibility letter really, it just says that they can file an application. It doesn't necessarily, you know, have, have binding terms that the town has to abide by, except for the fact that you have to hear the application, because they have a project eligibility letter.
Even when DHCD has notated a, a provision?
Yes. So, DHCD often will notate things such as, you know, there are traffic concerns, there's septic concerns, things like that, and, you know.
No, this is on, on the lines of the condo fees.
I, I, I've never seen that before. I've never seen them.
You've never seen the project eligibility letter with the?
No, I haven't. Nope, I have not.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure if they're even doing that anymore. I don't know, but I haven't seen it.
So, what happens if you have one and it's not in the comprehensive permit?
Then it should be in the, if, if DHCD approved the condo fees, it should be in the regulatory agreement with DHCD.
But shouldn't it first be in the permit?
If that's what the board intended, if the board intended that that was the case, but it's not always the case, I don't, I don't know. But, I don't think it is, I don't think it makes the permit in, you know, ineligible because it doesn't have it in it.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think most of us on the zoning board of appeals, we've, at least as long as I've been on it, we've just kind of assumed that DHCD did their thing. Now, this last 40B, you brought up the, the springing amendment there. As far as I know, that's never been done on any of the previous 40Bs in the town. Not that there's a whole lot of them, but.
Well, there's a few.
But that's never been done before, and I don't know if it, is that something new? Is that something that the previous town council just never mentioned?
Um, it's something that our firm started doing, because we're not getting much support from the state. So, it's our job to look out for our towns, so we're doing whatever we can to look out for the towns. Now, I, I will say that we've received some heat from, from DHCD for requiring these things, and I think maybe if they were, if a developer challenged it, it might not be. But, it's, for them, it's not a big deal, because they're already signing on with DHCD.
But I know, you know, when we just went through this last 40B process, as a member of the ZBA, I looked at, you know, where's, where's the driveway going in? What, what are we doing for screening?
Yep.
And those sort of things. I just assumed, perhaps wrongly, that the state was taking care of what happens when all these are built.
They, they, they are, and they should be, in my opinion. Because we do not track sales, we do not track if a sale, if an affordable sale was reduced appropriately. That's on the monitoring agent, and the monitoring agent, there's a monitoring agent agreement with DHCD.
But we could go in and start putting those sorts of things in there.
Um, I, I, I don't know who would enforce them. I don't know how you would, I, I really don't know how you could, because there already is a monitoring agent. The monitoring agent is required by DHCD, and so, it would be on the monitoring agent for things like sale prices and things like that. You know, maybe the assessor would pick up on it, but by then, the sale would already be finished. It would be, you know, already be completed, so we'd then be looking to unwind a sale, which is very hard to do.
Yeah. Because in this particular case with the HOA fee issue, it looks like when that was originally done, based upon the eligibility letter, the number that's, the numbers that are in there. They, DHCD, their process is basically to look at the undivided interest. And when they did this project back in 2004, it looks like DHCD's concern was, we want to make sure that the reduced-cost housing has equal voting rights to their, to their neighbors. So, we want to make sure that if you're a sixteen-hundred-square-foot unit, you have the same undivided share as a sixteen-hundred-square-foot market rate unit, because they were concerned about the voting rights. And I don't know if the condo law came in. And I don't know if the condo law came in after that and changed it. I know there was a, I know that was amended in, in 2014, but, but that's where, you know, the, this can help, because DHCD doesn't do that now.
Yeah, in 2014, the statute required that, that it, the condo fee is in correlation to ownership interest. However, the condominium documents, when they were approved, you know, drafted and approved at the time, even in 2004, didn't provide for a reduction.
Oh, I understood, but I'm just saying, when DHCD was monitoring that originally, their focus was on voting rights. And now DHCD has updated their, and now they're concerned, so now they actually have it, where-
Right.
They're, they're reducing the share-
Yes.
Right off the bat.
Right.
So it's, it's kind of taken care of that way. But there's that window of all the, all the 40Bs that were approved in between those two timeframes.
Yeah, it's also a little confusing, too, because under the, under the DHCD policy that you're talking about, it's, it only specifically refers to LIP units, which is the local initiative program units. So if you have a non-LIP comprehensive permit, you know, do those, does that policy still apply? It should. I don't know why they only limited it to LIPS.
Well, I noticed-
It doesn't look, you know?
No, I'm talking about in general.
South Street that we just did,
Yeah.
the original HOA documents drafts that were submitted to us, it specifically said in there that the reduced rate units would have equal-
Yeah, those were, those documents were essentially fol, they followed the policy.
Yeah, well, when they later went back and revised them, and now they've changed it to where the first, the voting rights and everything, the percentage share is based upon the value of the units.
Yeah, and that's-
It's not on the square footage, it's not-
And that's in accordance with the policy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. That's how you get around 183A. 183A is the condo statute, and that's how you get around that, is with the following the policy.
Okay, I have a personal concern with diminishing the voting rights of the reduced rate market, reduced rate unit in comparison to the market rate units.
So does this, does, South Street, do they, they diminish the voting rights?
Yes.
Oh, okay. It shouldn't. So don't approve the condo documents?
Well-
Okay.
But it, it just seems to me that it's extremely unfair that-
Yeah.
Any, you know, they have those four units, one of which is a reduced rate. Any two units, when they vote, automatically have like a 54 percent-
Yeah.
-share, so they automatically can do whatever two of them agree to do. But the person in the reduced rate unit always has to get two others to agree with them. So it's kind of unfair, just because of the fact that it's a reduced rate unit, they get, because it's all based on value.
Right. Right, but, I mean, the zoning board doesn't necessarily have to approve the condominium documents. It'd be interesting to see what, what DHCD's position on that is, but-
Yeah, that would be the next question. So someone does a 40B, and they come afterwards, because it is afterwards, to the ZBA to have the condo-
Yeah.
or the, either the condominium or the association documents are approved by us. Where, I mean, what can we do when they come and say, "This is the document we're gonna use"? Can we question? Can we refuse them?
Uh, yeah, they have to be, they have to be approved by the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't not approve the condo documents to stop the project, but you have to make sure that the condo doc, the condo documents are in line with, with the decision.
So you, you can say that, for example, no, you know, you can't charge the same HOA fees to everyone. You can't, you know-
So, yeah, with, with an HOA, with a homeowners association, you definitely want to have that in the decision, because that's not, that's not regulated by statute anywhere. Condo fees are regulated by statute, so if there's nothing in the document, it falls onto the statute.
Thank you.
Something that we had looked at previously.
Well, when South Street came in, they had their, remember they gave us draft way in the beginning? Those, those followed the, the DHCD policy. So they had a monitoring agent, they had everything in there.
Yeah.
So-
And that's part of the permit?
It is part of the permit, yes. We, I'm pretty sure-
Because you're a wise lady.
Well, I think I put it in.
Could, could you just better explain what the monitoring agent does and for whom he or she works?
Um, the monitoring agent technically works for the developer, for the applicant.
A contractor or an employee?
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 no. A monitoring agent has to be, has to somehow be certified. It can usually, it can, it's usually a regional housing authority that can act as a monitoring agent. There are professional monitoring agents out there. But, you know, what they do is they run the lottery, they advertise, they advertise for the lottery, they run the lottery. They're supposed to, they're supposed to be the ones that determine local preference. If there's a local preference provision, you know, for local residents or for employees that work in town, they're supposed to be monitoring that. They're supposed to be the ones that, you know, are gonna, that are gonna say, "We have no one to buy this affordable unit." And so that's when DHCD and the monitoring agent, you know, decide that.
So they handle the de-control piece only, not, they're not an auditor of sorts?
No, DHCD is the auditor. They audit the, they audit the profits.
Not the project?
Well, no, DHCD has the regulatory agreement. So there's a division of DHCD that makes sure that the regulatory agreement is upheld. There's also a division of DHCD that, that basically calculates all the profits, makes sure that the profits don't exceed 20 percent.
Is that 20 percent profit on the total project, or just the affordable units?
No, on the total project. And that's kind of the, the give and take. So the developer gets all of these, you know, waivers to build a project, but the profit is captured.
We, as a town, do have a master plan, is that the right term for it? Correct me if I'm wrong, I, I understand we do have a master plan, and portions of it get updated?
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the open space plan is incorporated into it, the housing production plan's incorporated into it. There's an economic component, there's, you know, a open, I mean, a-
Transportation.
Transportation component, I mean, we, so, and we work on those on an annual basis. And right now, conservation's working on the open space plan.
Is the housing production plan certified by DHCD?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so, you know, you guys should look and see, there, there could be, you know, could be a safe harbor that might be eligible next time, based on the housing production plan.
Well, we're at 10 percent.
You are now? You weren't-
Not for long.
Not for very long.
Just barely.
We're at 2.06.
We're at 10 percent, and if they continue with the groundbreaking work they're doing at River Ridge, and we get the 84 units of apartments that are part of phase one.
When do they go online as far as-
When they pull the building permit.
Is, South Street's on the SHI, right?
I have no idea.
No.
I don't know. It's not so. But they have, they should go right on and stay on until they-
They're not on yet, Eloise.
I don't believe so.
No.
That would be a help, because there's two or three houses being built down.
That will slip.
And when you go 10.06, it doesn't take too many houses in Berlin.
Well, but it's based on the 2010 census, so it, this has to be accomplished by 2020. So when the 2020 census is completed, then we get a recalculated number of total residential units. So right now, we're at 1183. Let's say we jump to, you know, 15 or 1600, which is probably a fair bet. That means we need 160 units. We're at 118, 119 now. Then we add the 84, we jump up to 200 and something. By rights, we ought to be in a reasonable position for a reasonable amount of time. So they, because they're doing site work for the apartments today and putting in the infrastructure, one would assume that they'll do foundation work in the spring, which is not that far away.
100 of the silver units would've been there two years ago.
Well, 10 years ago, when they first pulled the damn permits. But, I mean, when you, when they're doing the work now, and they're hot to trot, I assume that we're gonna get building permits, you know, foundation permits pulled in fairly short order, at least before the next census. So, I mean, that's the trigger for us. But the problem we still have is the loss of units because of our inability, or DHCD's inability for the monitoring agent to locate qualified applicants. But are you finding that that's true in, in many towns? I mean, why are we suffering from this problem?
I, I'm not, I don't find, um, I have another, I have another town that it is, it is difficult.
But are they wi, are they within 495 or outside of 495?
Um, Lakeville.
Okay, yeah.
So 495, but, um, it doesn't happen with rentals.
Right.
It happens with for-sale units.
Yeah.
And so in Lakeville, they have a very large 40R transportation overlay district with apartments. So it's not necessarily hurting their ability, but, but they're the, they're the only other town that I know is having, are having units come off permanently. I have other towns where units are going on and off constantly because of lack of building permit, lack of progress.
Right, I mean, we've been in that boat.
Yeah.
So Karen Sonnenberg, one time, sat in one of our meetings and said, "You, a, a unit should never be lost," right? But we don't, I don't understand, she couldn't fully explain why she wanted to say that. You know, you can't find a qualified buyer, so what, you know? The unit should remain somehow viable and accessible down the road. But is that true?
I mean, I, I guess, I don't know how, if the, if the, so, for example, if DHCD agrees to have the regulatory agreement come off-
Right, then it's gone.
Then how can they then agree, a subsequent buyer, you know, two, two or three buyers later, how can they then agree to, how can they force them to put it back on?
Yeah.
I don't know where, I don't know, I, I don't know, I don't know where she was coming from on that.
Now, Stowe and a few of those towns east of us have created a consortium where they, they have a housing trust or- and, and are there others in the state?
Um, I think Hamilton-Wenham might have a housing trust, a regional housing trust together.
So now, to us, it seems like we ought to find a way to, and we're too small to have an entity unto ourselves. If we could join with somebody, we have some funds. If we were able in a position where a unit was gonna be lost, to acquire it and rent it as an affordable unit, and at some point, put it back on the market as an affordable unit, it would be to our distinct advantage. And if, but we need some facilitator to help us with that.
Right.
So is, is, is it likely that, that's, that a group like the group with Stowe and those towns would be willing to work with someone like us? Or do we need to create some new unique entity all, all ourselves?
Well, the only thing I, the only thing that, I guess the only hurdle that I see is that, so to create, to create an affordable housing trust, you have to go through town meeting.
Right.
So it, it would, it would appear to me that every single article on, in each town has to be exactly the same-
Okay.
for town meeting, to create that. So, um, there's no, um, there's no regional housing authority or anything that, that, that the town can tap into.
Well, we talked to the regional planning commission, and we said, you know, "Let's investigate this and see if we can find mutual communities," you know, things Bolton, Boylston, you know, whatever. And there's interest, but-
Yeah.
we couldn't break the ice, you know, to the point where we got the, you know, the agreement.
Right.
And then we said to the commission, you know, "Is this something that you want to take on?" You know, "Do you want to become or create an entity unto yourself there that would handle this responsibility for multiple towns within the, you know, the region?" We've got 40 communities, you know, they wouldn't have to be contiguous. They could be scattered all over southern Worcester County. But there's a lot of small towns, west of Worcester certainly, so it seems like that would make sense. So we're still working on that, but we haven't gotten there. And we're still potentially losing units, which makes me sick.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we want to do it on our own?
Because of the cost.
Okay, what kind of costs are associated?
Well, you've got to have an agent that's gonna run after this. You're gonna have to acquire property, you're gonna have to be the landlord that rents it. I mean, there's, there's a lot of issues that I think we'd be better off if we could share that responsibility, like Stowe did with, I don't know who else they're in with, Maynard and whatever.
So what we would have would be a pool of money that we could purchase a unit.
Eloise has got, hell, she's got half a million dollars, you know what I mean? We could, we got the seed money to get it going.
Hunger is expensive, but then we could purchase it. So what we need is some kind of an overseer-
Right.
that can deal with the details. Which brings me to another question. Could we write into permits that, when the unit goes to be sold, that the town has to be notified?
Well, we find out now. How do we find out?
We are here.
Doesn't DHCD tell us?
DHCD is supposed to notify you.
Yeah.
Oh, they do.
We are.
Okay, so you know how soon after it's going on the market?
The problem is you only have like 60 days. And the last time, you know, when you're, when you're facing a banking crush, crash, it just doesn't work. I thought joining, if CMRCP could put together, we could, you know, buy a little portion of their time. So that way, they could, because you have to have somebody who has gone through the banking instruction. And, you know, they could have people lined up. I think there are people who, you know, if I can't live in Northborough affordably, maybe I could go to Berlin, it's not that far. And, you know, if they could manage that, because three active people on the affordable housing were very nice people, but it's beyond our, our level.
So you're working on that, Tim, right?
Yeah, but I've been working on it for two years, you know, where's my progress?
Two units, which are, which are not mathematically eligible for an affordable buyer. They would automatically go market rate because of the cost. And the condo fees, that's probably a hundred dollars.
Yeah, that would be DHCD's determination.
People, it's not under 38 percent of any of the incomes that are DHCD eligible.
I, I never deal with the numbers.
So what guidance would you give us beyond what Tim's looking at? I mean, do you have any ideas? Are there any private people that would do this? Until we can hook up with someone?
I mean, all of the monitoring agents that I, that I, you know, ever run across are private. The woman that was here for South Street, she was a monitoring agent.
Yeah.
She was the one that was gonna run the lottery, remember? I can't remember her name, but that's, she said-
So is that an individual that you can engage and say, "Just in case, and then we'll pay you"?
Probably, except for the fact that, what would that person be doing as a subcontractor for the town? It's kind of a, it's kind of a, a job that never ends, right, Eloise? I mean, these things come in, it's, it's not necessarily a one-project job. It's, it's a monitoring, you're constantly keeping track of things. And again, if, you know, if the town decides to buy it, then yeah, you, then you're essentially a landlord.
What I'm thinking in terms of, okay, the town gets notified that this unit's going up for sale, okay? And now we turn around and engage this person, or keep them on retainer, and engage them to handle the situation.
So I don't know if there's anyone out there that would, that does that, because the town really shouldn't have to do that, because the DHCD regulatory- because the DHCD regulatory agreement requires a monitoring agent that, that does just that.
But what I'm saying is, okay, so they call us up and say,
They, they tried.
there's units in jeopardy.
Right.
Okay. Now, where do we go from there? Can we, is there someone we could engage?
Probably. I, I don't know, I've never seen it before. Um, you know, DHCD, I think that one of their, um, you know, governing purposes is affordable housing. And I think that they're, um, they try really hard to create affordable housing. You know, keeping affordable housing, I'm not so sure. It seems that, you know, it seems that they're
Dropping the ball.
Well, sometimes their answer to, to tough situations is that it becomes marketable.
Lynn, do you have one or more on the horizon right now?
Excuse me?
Do you have one or more that are on the horizon, right now?
I think we stand that potential, do you not, Tim?
Yeah. No, but is there, is there a unit or more right now that is on your radar?
Right now, as far as I know, no. I wouldn't get the notification, it would go to
I usually send it out to a cast of thousands.
Because I, the, the thought is that if the next one that comes up, bring it to the attention of a group of interested town, let's say, officials, leaders, and start to talk about the options. Well, the problem is, as Eloise said, you've got X number of days, and the days No, I understand that, but you've got to start somewhere. Pretty fast.
Well, the first thing I'd be looking at is enabling legislation at town meeting.
Yeah.
That would basically
You have to create an, an affordable housing trust.
Right. That would be able to work on getting that, keeping that unit, because you can't say we're gonna call a special town meeting to allow us to purchase XYZ.
Do you guys have an inclusionary zoning bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. So, if you have, if you have an inclusionary zoning bylaw, do you have a payment in lieu?
No.
Oh, okay. Because if you had a payment in lieu, you'd have to have some kind of trust set up, but you don't.
Yeah.
Well, I think that would be something that perhaps the planning board could take on. Do you think, Tim?
Yeah, I mean, we've been playing with it, playing with it for a while.
Well, I'm just saying, create the trust so that you could act, all right?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, I'd like to find, well, like, well, I mean, if Boylston's having a discussion again, and it's serious, and Wes Boylston wants to do something, that, you know, you might very well be able to find three towns that would write the same ordinance and pass it as a bylaw, and then end up in a situation where
Well, okay, but I'm saying enabling legislation in the meantime
Yeah.
that would allow you to purchase the unit without having to go through town meeting and hoops.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we went through town meeting, established the, the trust, did whatever was necessary, got the trust in place, put, got the town to put three hundred thousand dollars in it.
They've got the money, it's just the access to it.
And then it, then it would be sitting there waiting, should the need arise.
Well, and then with
And then you could act very quickly.
With the Community Preservation Act, you've got ten percent of those funds that are gonna theoretically grow toward affordable housing. So, you know, you, it, it's not like we're gonna be short on
But to be honest with you, Tim
Because we're not talking about many units, you know, it's just you don't want to lose.
Well, not a lot, but all we need is a few at this point.
Right.
Okay? So I guess what I'm saying is, it would be great to go through town meeting and it, but if we had some piece of enabling legislation at town meeting that just said, Tim Wheeler is Crown King, and should he choose to purchase a unit that would otherwise, um, become a market value unit, that he can do it
Yeah.
without coming back to the town, is what I'm saying. And I think that that's what you need sooner rather than later. Because if this were to go on for a year or two, all of a sudden, something happens and a unit's being sold. And you've got no power to be able to do anything in timely fashion.
Yeah.
So South Street, those units should be on the SHI, so.
They should be on it now, but
Yeah.
we haven't seen them show up.
It hasn't been a year yet, so they should be on it. So if there's a year that they can be on it, and then he has to do a building permit.
Which ones are we talking about?
The, uh, South Street.
Oh, okay.
There's three.
Well, I mean, Chris would have had to sign it as the executive member of the selectmen.
The last number we got just, finally showed the, the final six at Dudley Road.
Yeah.
And, and finally, the four units on lack and the group home, that they denied us for years and years, even though they existed. And, and those ten got us to one nineteen, which was ten percent. Which we argued, of course, that we had.
Right.
And as a result, shouldn't have approved South Street, but
That was yesterday.
Yep, that was yesterday. That's where, you know, you get kind of frustrated with these guys from DHCD who say, you know, so what if it's the most difficult place in town to get to? So what if the fire trucks would have trouble winding up this road? So what, you know, there's a high school in Hudson right around the corner, and there's a market basket, um, over the hill here. This is beautiful. I mean, I got tired of that nonsense.
Like I said, there was a project eligibility, eligibility letter for a, a development that didn't have water.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there anything else? Any other questions?
Well, yes, they folk, they won't understand.
It's not, it's a small town. Oh, you mean the huge.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else? Oh, sure.
Is there recourse, like, for the people that don't have water, like the
Oh, the project is stalled, it's, it's not gonna go forward.
So, say a project goes
But there's no recourse for my time that I had to sit through a whole bunch of hearings to know if I have water.
I mean, no, is there any recourse for abutters? I'm saying, is saved those butters, save that, something happened like Stowe, they went through, did the project, and then they found out about the sewage?
No, unfortunately, that would have been a, a private action, the develop, you know. However, um, your zoning board of appeals was very forward-thinking in the last, um, the last decision, and required surety and required, um,
Testing.
testing and baseline testing, so we would hopefully avoid a situation like that. But that was, um, I, I had never done that before. I, and, and he, and he agreed. He agreed to the surety, so it really, it wasn't an issue. So hopefully, hopefully that's a way for, to protect abutters. The other thing, the most important thing with forty Bs, if, you know, if you're ever on the ZBA or any, anything, is screening. If, if you can get these things screened from the abutters, it really, I, down the road, it makes a difference. Because even though the plan shows screening, you know, it, it takes years for these trees to grow and things, but once they do, it really, it's a, it's a huge benefit. Uh, you had a question?
How is the affordable price determined?
It's eighty percent of the mean income of the town. And it's determined by DHCD, not by town.
Which is federal.
Of course.
I think you meant the price of the house rather than the eligibility.
That is, oh, oh, the price of the house, it's, it's eighty percent of the market rate houses.
What's the waiting period to de-control?
I think it's, I think it's nine, it's, it's in the regulatory agreement with DHCD, and I think it's only ninety days.
So on, on day ninety-one of
If there's
the doors being opened, they could start the process?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant if there was a sale and they couldn't find an, an affordable buyer.
Wow. Is that the only de-control process?
Yeah, unless there's, I mean, I guess if something happened that made the project all of a sudden become uneconomical, um, but that would be, no, because that would be before the project is, is over. So I, I, I don't know of any, um, like I said, unfortunately, I'm town council, and we, the town doesn't necessarily involve, get involved after the permit, after the, after the project is permitted, unless there's an, an enforcement issue with regard to the permit. So unless the permit actually says, you have to put in sixty-eight trees, and they only put in sixty, then the building commissioner can issue, you know, enforcement. But when it, all of the, all of the monitoring that happens afterwards is supposed to happen with DHCD and the monitoring agent pursuant to the regulatory agreement.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, there's one more question.
Can the town put a sunset clause in that says no unit will be sold? Affordable unit can be sold.
So we do it, you know, yeah.
What?
Ours is written as in perpetuity.
Right.
The catch is, if they can't get somebody, if somebody can't get banking, a mortgage, within that ninety days completed, that's it, it's market rate.
It's also
That's all we have.
No, and it's also my understanding that
That's why we have to do what we were talking about. Give someone the, the ability to purchase that unit and then rent it.
But there's also, covenants on land are usually limited to thirty years, there's a statute. So I don't know if in perpetuity would work. So far, the only in perpetuity that's confirmed is a conservation motion.
So you would suggest we do rental units, then, because?
And you get a hundred percent of the units. So if you, a rental project, if you have a hundred, twenty-five have to be affordable, but you get, you get credit for a hundred.
Who, who wrote those regs? I mean, that's, it's so fixed against little towns, you know? That's the thing that burns you up.
And it's hard to get people because
We're lucky, because we've got a big apartment complex coming in, but we sold our soul to do it, but, you know.
We also have a big hotel. I can't imagine where the water's gonna come from for them. But we have it against us, I think, because we have no public transportation. There's a lot of, you know, for, for low-income people, it's difficult. And when you're talking eighty percent of market value, the market value in Berlin isn't exactly the lowest in the state, so
No, and if you go to Boylston, it's different, eighty percent than it is in Berlin, because you're in a different zone, you know?
And they need a down payment, so they say you have to be low-income.
Yeah.
So unless you're like a teacher starting out and daddy gives you the money, what do you do?
Thank you, Eloise.
Thank you very much.
All right, excellent.